Welcome this afternoon to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of October 24, 2022. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or a group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to that item. I think I just said that. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. And tonight is one of those open meeting evenings. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first item of business?
First item of business today for our agenda, October 24, 2022, is a few meeting notices. A city council meeting for today, of course, will start tonight at 5:30 with public comment. City council meeting for Monday, October 31, 2022, will start at 3:00 PM. Our first item on the agenda will be our consent agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone present wishing to speak on these items on their consent agenda? Items 1 and 2. Anyone present up for those items? All right, seeing none, we can move on. Is there anyone present? Okay, yes.
Yeah, I apologize. I just noticed that others have a sheet of paper that I don't. May I have?
Yes, there's some agendas that are available on the podium right outside that door, and I believe there's one coming up for you right now.
On your right.
There you go. Thanks for asking, okay. Anyone else need an agenda or present to speak on these items? Okay, we can move on.
We can now vote on Sections 1 and 2. I'll be calling Item 1A, Approving a Professional Services Agreement Supplement Number 1 for Preliminary Engineering Services between the City of Lincoln and WSP USA Inc. for the 8th Street between 40th and 56th Streets Rehabilitation Project, which was introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Shob. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-1, or excuse me, 6-0. Item number 1B, Approving a Professional Services Agreement Supplement Number 2 for Environmental Services between the City of Lincoln and Felsberg, Holt and Ulevig for the Cotner Boulevard and Adams Street Traffic Signal Replacement Project, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1C is approving the Lower Platte River Consortium Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between the city on behalf of the Lincoln Water System, Nebraska Department of Natural Resources, Lower Platte South Natural Resources District, Lower Platte North Natural Resources District, Papio Missouri River Natural Resources District, and Metropolitan Utilities District for Continued Drought Planning Activities, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1D is approving the Substitution Agreement between the city and Aviva Group for SCADA Software to be used at Lincoln Transportation Utilities Operations and Facilities for a term of a three-year term for November 2, 2022, to November 2, 2025, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Raybold. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1E is approving the distribution of funds representing interest earnings on a short-term investment of idle funds during the month ended August 31, 2022, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1F is setting the Board of Equalization Hearing Date of Monday, November 21, 2022, at 5:30 PM on the assessments for the Downtown Management BID, Downtown Management Core Overlay District, Downtown Maintenance District, and West Haymarket Maintenance District, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items 2A through 2Cs, introduced by Shob.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
All right.
That concludes our consent agenda. We shall now move on to Section 4, which is our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling Items 4A and 4B together. Application of George Inc. Doing Business as a Works Tavern for a Class C Liquor License Located at 1329 O Street and the Related Manager Application of Jordan B. Elfers.
Is there anyone present? Come on forward, please.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Do I need to fill this out?
Yes, if you would, please. And then just state your name and address for the record.
Jordan B. Elfers, 1345 H Street, Apartment B4.
Good. Is there anything you'd like to tell us about this application?
I'm pretty excited to be taking over a fixture downtown, and we'd like to continue being that, more or less.
Well, it certainly is a fixture of downtown, so... Any questions from the council or comments about this application? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much for being here. We can move forward.
I'll be calling Items 4C and 4D together. Application of Warhorse Gaming Lincoln LLC Doing Business as Warhorse Casino Lincoln for a Class I Liquor License Located at 7055 South 1st Street and the Related Manager Application of Lance G. Morgan.
Welcome back, Ms. McNally.
Thank you very much.
Please raise your right hand whilst you're doing it. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynn McNally appearing on behalf of Warhorse Casino. This liquor license will be a transfer from the horsemen. The horsemen have had it for the last seven years without incident. They are taking over all food and beverage for us, so that's the reason that we're applying for this license. Lance G. Morgan will be the manager in name only. He will not be serving you, thank God. Walter Coffey is the head of food and beverage for the facility. Walter, do you want to raise your hand over there? So he'll be the one that'll be taking care of you, and he's spent a lifetime doing so. So that's all we had to add. Thank you.
Good. Questions for Ms... Yes, Councilwoman Washington.
Yes, hi. Thanks for coming back again.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just, I was a little confused because it looked like Lance Morgan, he was listed.
Yes.
And it said that he had managed lots of licenses, and then it said he had not yet had training, and I thought, well, I think that's inconsistent.
He's managed lots of licenses because they have Pony Expresses and Heritage Express. Those are convenience stores, and the licenses are all in his name as the CEO of the company. Ho-Chunk actually has 1,800 employees right now, so I don't think he has ever once worked at a Pony Express, but all of the licenses are in his name, so that's why he has not had the training.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think it would be kind of humorous if you made him do it.
I don't think I would.
Any other questions for the applicant or comments? Well, we know you've been a little busy, and things seem to be going really well, so...
Thank you so much, and the wildfire went the other direction, or it went out or whatever last night, so thank goodness.
Yeah, nothing like a fire to keep you on your toes.
Yeah, I got a little nerve-wracking there for a second.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we can move on.
I'll be calling Items 4E and 4F together. Application of B and WW Lincoln LLC Doing Business Bob and Willie's Wonder Bowl for a Class C Liquor License Located at 2901 South 84th Street, Suite 16, and the Related Manager Application of Philip L. Schaefer. Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, appearing today on behalf of the applicant. This is the second location in Nebraska for this concept, which is mini bowling. The applicant and their team have 13 licenses in Nebraska, great experience, and have a very good record. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Yes, Councilman, or yes, Councilman Shob.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry, would you elaborate on mini bowling?
Yeah, mini, it's essentially bowling meets ski ball, if you will. It's really entertaining, been a very popular concept, so you can fit quite a few lanes within a small space. Lot faster than bowling as well, so...
Is it similar or different than nine-pin or the little duck-pin bowling?
I would say similar, more similar to that than bowling or ski ball. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
When will you open?
They hope, they wish they were open today, but hopefully by year's end. That's the goal.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right. All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on.
Next, I'll be calling Item 4G. Manager Application of Amanda M. Cadena for Kinseth Hotel Corporation Doing Business as Hampton Inn Located at 7343 Husker Circle. I don't have to swear you win. Not on a manager application.
Yeah, Amanda Cadena, 6235 South 34th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Sorry, I just moved here and I still don't remember my address. Just getting my manager's application to sell just beer at my hotel. Hopefully in about a year, we'll have a brand-new hotel because we are undergoing renovation in March.
Very good. Well, welcome. We're glad to have you. Is there anything else you'd like to say about your business?
Longstanding hotel, sounds like it's been there for 13 years. The crew there, now that I've rehired, is doing fantastic. If you just want a good place, we'll be doing a home-for-the-holiday special, so if any locals want to have a staycation and not get too far away, come join us.
Sounds like it's the place to be.
Nicely, yes.
Any questions? Or comments for our applicant? Councilman Shob, would you care to sig anymore?
I would not, yes. I think, yeah. Yeah, I would like to, but I think it can only hurt the deal. If there's no one else coming forward, I'd like to make a motion. Would that be okay?
That would be great.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval of Items 4A through 4G.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion on any of these items? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Very good.
That concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 5, our public hearing resolutions. I'll be calling Item 5A, Accepting and Approving the Report of New Impending Claims Against the City for September 16 through September 30, 2022.
Is there anyone present? Yes, sir, come on forward.
Members of the council, my name is Nathaniel Skinner, and I am a current sophomore at the University of Nebraska-Lincoln. I'm appearing today regarding an event that occurred Friday, September 16, at roughly 6 o'clock in the evening. While turning southbound on the 33rd Street, I suffered a flat rear passenger tire due to a broken concrete gap on the stormwater intake on the corner of 33rd and Holdridge. Upon inspection, I noticed that the intake had gashed my tire as I made the turn. This event forced me not only to replace the damaged tire, but also purchase a brand-new full set of tires. This was, in fact, due to the nature of a four-wheel-drive vehicle. Not replacing a complete set of tires when one is damaged can cause extreme wear on the vehicle's drivetrain. This was explained to me by the service manager of Firestone, who could not authorize repair without replacing a full set. After consulting the Ford dealer on this matter for a second opinion, all four tires were replaced. After service was completed, I paid a total of $676.34 after tax. The final price of the repair was adjusted to account for any road hazard insurance that came with the tire, along with the difference in the remaining tread depth of almost 60%. It is my understanding here that my claim here today be rejected. Although my claim may be lacking the legal proceedings for approval, I believe there is a civil standard to be upheld. As a full-time student and someone who works part-time in the Lincoln area, how am I to be expected to notify the city of any infrastructure defects before they could cause harm in the future? A quick drive around the city will tell you that almost all the stormwater intakes in the area are in perfect condition, indicating a standard, and more than likely, a short repair list. Further, after my tire struck the damaged inlet, I reached out to the city to evaluate my options and make them aware of the damaged and hazardous infrastructure. Within two days of contacting the city, the inlet was repaired. According to the city attorney, this inlet, quote-unquote, "would not affect any vehicles using the traveled part of the road." I find it quite interesting how quickly a seemingly harmless issue, according to the city, is resolved so quickly. At the end of the day, I hope the council understands the situation I find myself in. As a full-time student, paying my way through school, $676 is no small amount. Overall, this was not a great situation. My tires were in great condition and had almost 60% of their life remaining. As a taxpayer in the city of Lincoln, I believe that I am due total compensation, and this matter is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Skinner. Are there questions or comments for Mr. Skinner? Yes, Councilwoman Raybold?
Mr. Skinner, could you tell us how your tire came into contact with the inlet? Because I saw a photo, and it seems like you were not driving along the road to be...
Correct.
To strike the inlet.
Right. I have a little bit longer of a car, and that corner of 33rd and Holdridge is a little tight with the two gas stations sitting there. There was a car in the turn lane, turning, turning to the left, going north in the intersection there, so I had to make a little bit sharper of a turn. As you, the inlet, you could see there was concrete that was sticking out. There was even some exposed rebar. My tire was completely fine, my wheel was completely fine. The tire just saw the gash of about two inches. So I did not scrape the inlet or anything like that. I just believe that a piece of the inlet that was sticking out gashed the side of the tire as I made the turn.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Skinner? Or comments? Okay. Thank you for being here. We will take a vote at the end of this voting session on all of the claims. Is there anyone else present today that wants to testify on a claim they have pending with the city? Okay, yes, sir?
I bet it's my time to...
Okay.
Under the rubric you've...
Okay. Come on up, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lincoln citizen Mark Benneke. I live at 1626 D Street in Lincoln, Apartment 111, 68502.
Okay.
All right, so I walked out to my car on September 10 of this year, and a very large tree limb fell from a tree with rotted branches and crushed and told my car. My car is parked on city property. The tree itself is on Cabredlo's property, which is a very large apartment company. So my initial response is to talk with the city attorney and ask if any kind of damages could be, you know, any kind of payment for damages could be provided. I contacted Tyler K. Spawn. Apparently, I'm one of the city attorneys. He initially rejected the claim. I could be wrong, but my assumption is that he may have rejected it on incomplete evidence. A few things. One, at first, I thought that this is, you know, the act of God statute, you know, like the wind blew the tree down, no one's responsible for it. And then I went looking at the tree, and the more I looked at just how problematic this tree is in terms of an assortment of apparently rotted branches, it occurred to me that maybe not, maybe this could have easily been avoided on the basis of the city Forest Service having identified it in advance. This, the Forestry Department was contacted on the matter, and they had said that they have no record of the tree being a problem. It looks like a pretty bad tree. In fact, these very large rotted branches are such a problem, there's two that are about to fall off on other cars. I contacted the Forestry Service about it, and they haven't, they haven't gotten back with me on that or gotten the tree branches down. So the first request I have is I would like someone in the city forestry department to just basically come out there and look at this tree, because if I had to guess, they may infer that the tree should have been identified in advance as being a really problematic tree. And on that basis, to have the city review my case. The second thing is, a different approach is contacting the apartment company who owned the tree. My understanding is it's sort of analogous to a car collision. When you run into someone's car, you both trade insurance. My current understanding is that what's supposed to happen is you contact the apartment company, and they give you their insurance, and then you file a claim and see if the apartment insurance can cover the damages on the basis of acknowledged neglect on the part of the apartment company to observe these, this tree issue. I contacted this Cabredlo's property who owned the tree, the property that has a tree on it. I contacted them by email, and I contacted them at least once by phone, and I can't get a hold of them. I have an interest in getting a hold of them because they might have just the insurance that could cover the costs. They don't seem to want to get back with me, though. So my second request is to maybe have the city help me contact them and help me...
One minute.
Thank you. To help me get in contact with them and see if their insurance covers it. That sums it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Benneke? Councilwoman Washington, and then Councilwoman Raybold.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Benneke, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Could you please come back?
When you started, you said that you were parked on city property. Did you mean that you were parked along the curb on the city street?
Correct.
Okay. And you also then had said that you believe the tree is owned by Cabredlo?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, K-A-B-R-E-D-L-O.
Because does that tree sit right in front of, of the apartment building? Are you...
The tree is not on city property. It's on the property of the yard of the Cabredlo's area. Yeah.
All right.
But when it fell, it did crush my car, which was parked on the street.
And then you said you reported the tree to the city forestry... And then you said you reported the tree to the city forestry program?
I did.
Before the accident or after the accident?
The first report I made was to the police.
Okay.
Who came out and visited with me and provided me with the police case code and so forth. It was also the police officer who called the Lincoln Forestry Service, who subsequently came out and removed the tree branch.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Councilwoman Raybold, I think we have another question for you, sir.
I have a question for you. Can you tell me, do you have insurance for your vehicle?
I do, I have AAA insurance. And I have limited income, limited to the extent that getting full comprehensive and collision insurance would have been outside the scope, outside of the realm of being able to afford it, in my judgment.
So your insurance did not cover...
That's correct.
Any reimbursement for this incident?
They have officially said that based on the insurance I currently hold, they don't cover things like tree damage.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question of staff, too.
Of staff, okay. City attorney or forestry?
Forestry.
Forestry or parks? Okay, I see both are here. Thank you for being here. Thank you, sir, I think...
That covered it?
It does. We'll have some staff answer questions now. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chris Myers, Lincoln Parks and Recreation. I am the Parks Operations Manager.
Thank you very much. I think there's some concern or discrepancy. Is that a city tree?
It is.
Oh, it is a city tree.
It is in our inventory, yes.
And have you received prior notices or notifications or complaints about that tree in particular?
We have not.
You have not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, that answered my question.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions for staff before they go? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? We'll go through other claims, sir, and then have a final vote, so, today. Anyone else here that would like to speak on a claim before the city? Want a claim that you have before us? Josephine? Thank you very much. Thanks for waiting.
Yeah, does this go up here?
Yeah.
Look at that.
Does it work?
Yeah. Custom. How's it going? Good evening, city council. My name is Josephine Littwinnowitz, J-O-S-E-P-H-I-N-E-L-I-T-W-I-N-O-W-I-C-Z-M-O-U-S-E. Anyway, just stops at the Z.
Yeah.
I'm coming, and some, there's been new developments in my issue, and I'm coming to seek damage claims for both of my incidents that I brought before the city council before of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I can explain that very well, you know, when I'm subsequently asked. Well, I can, I'm going into it now. First of all, I found out that the pain I get is, I had a pretty much an idyllic life until recently, when I lost one of my health aides, just, you know, couldn't, didn't work out. She did a lot of hours, and in fact, I was in bed a lot, I had the fire department. It's okay now, because I'll get into the, anyway, I don't have much time, I don't want to... So when I'm stressed, it gets a lot worse, and it's still stressful now, because then I still don't have a lot of hours covered. And the owner of Respect Home Health, he comes and just does it, makes sure, you know, because nothing happens, because the fire department say, you know, you've got to be getting someone. And then I wonder how many people this happens to, but anyway. So when I'm in bed, I'm, remember, I'm disabled. I'm not, I'm in a protected class, and on that bus, I tipped over, hit my head, you know, I had a pre-existing damage from football. And, you know, the guy, I have to practice as a scrub, he's now on the FBS College Football Selection Team, and he's not a coach or coordinator or a national security advisor. He played back-to-back seasons for Notre Dame on, when they were one and two, he was a notable player, Rod West. And in the first half, I went up against an all-state, that was the real slog, offensive tackle. And so the damage, I hurt my neck then, and I went to sports doctor, so a pre-existing condition between that and my three coxageal, sacrocoxageal bulging disc, and, you know, because of my core strength, isn't so good. And here's the deal, when I spend more time in bed, I actually, because I have to, either because of the pain, a combination with my neck and my lower back, so I'm losing ability, and I'm losing it precipitously, and I'm getting pissed, and I can't find someone to cover my hours, and that's a whole nother issue of here, but it goes to point out who I am, that disabled person that was sitting in that spot. And just the other day, here's another reason. I went on the, and I don't take the bus that much, and you know probably why I don't take the taxi service, because I put my legs up on the front of the seat. So I like to take the bus, and I'm scared now, actually, because I just want to be killed. If I break my neck, I'm going to be pissed. I was on the forty-four bus, totally different, and I'd love to talk about some things if somebody comes up. And so I was on the forty-four bus just Friday, and on both trips, I'm trying to get the video, on both trips, my wheelchair slammed against the back of the bus, on both sides, on two different sides of the bus. Now, I went there on one side and came back on another, the forty-four bus, the other stuff happened on the fifty-three bus. So now I'm thinking, well, it's kind of implicit, it's kind of an implicit discrimination based on disability, because, you know, I think this initially happened in June, huh? And so no reasonable accommodations were being made, such as, hey, let's make sure this is all fixed. And I don't want to hold anybody's hand, so it's implied, but it's nevertheless just as valid. And you know what, it's not, you know, call it a finder's fee, because I got to deal with it. You know, it's for the pain, but also, I want to get a vehicle so I don't have to take the bus anymore. I can't, I don't know if it's ever going to be fixed, and, because I cannot go on that now. And the number of times it's happened, vis-à-vis the times I've taken the bus, is strikingly high. I don't leave a lot often anymore, especially because I like to be on, if I can, be up for a few hours, go back to bed, up for a few hours. Well, sometimes, you know, I have to stay in bed longer, and then the owner has to, like the other day, he was at, he works at Regional Center, he owns his company, and he was going to come back at eleven, but then I have my other health aide, who's like one of the three best I've had, she's just phenomenal, she came and did it. That includes making some food, and so, and then, you know, I got to worry about the minimum wage, I hope it increases, but then, you know, the huge problem, it's going to be devastating, what that does to the home health industry. So my stress isn't going to go away, because I'm going to be wondering what the hell next happens if something, life throws, like, because I was, it was idyllic, I had two aides, and, you know, there was little birdies on the pie in the windowsill in a Disney movie.
One minute.
And now that changed a little bit, and now I can't wait, I hope somebody's here from the bus people. Because I'm, and I like, because I'm disabled, right, I have cognitive issues, I'm doing kind of well right now, but I would like to engage, let's do it differently. If I could kind of be up while that other person, because I forget, I mean, it's, I forget the most important things. So what I'd like is, if it's possible, if it's not, that's okay, it's not a big deal, but it would be nice to engage, kind of, you know, kind of, you know, like on the spot on the floor, if it's possible, to try it, if not, okay, that's okay. And here, let me see, in my, ah, I just wanted to, I just thought of a, I'm going to, first of all, I had a, I had a guy, a friend of mine, he tried out for the Denver Broncos, and he was a, he was a Marine Lurps and not a Lorax, so he was a pretty tough guy, and it's recon, I don't know what they call it now, but my neck, he put his hand on the back, and he went, ugh! So here, let's see. He's pretty sensitive. Sometimes I can't, but sometimes I often can, and it's, sometimes it's, I'll probably do it, be able to do it in five minutes, but it's like, it's almost like Jell-O. And that happened, you know, that existed before this accident. But here's the thing, I was on a bus, where since, several times I reported this slide, and, you know, I'm just being slapled, dappled all around, I don't like it, I'm afraid to ride the bus, it's going to take fifty thousand dollars to get a vehicle, that, you know, so it has, like, cameras to help me stop in case, I want safety. And then, and then I thought, I think the state pays, you know, to trick it out so that you can drive it, right? I know a friend who has two muscles in each arm, and they're bicep muscles, and he doesn't have a tricep, so he has to actually do this, you know, and he can drive. The modifications cost eighty thousand dollars, paid for by the state, Medicaid, I guess, but since this has all happened, I don't want to do that. I think the city should pay for it, so that's part of it.
Josephine, we're over five minutes at this point.
Okay, I'm ready to go.
But we'll ask for questions from the council at this time. Does anybody have questions or comments for our testifier? About at this time? Okay. All right, but don't leave, because when we get through all of these, we'll vote in the voting session on all of the claims, okay? We're glad you're back today.
Thank you.
Did you have a question? Councilwoman Raybold, staff?
For LTU.
Okay, Director Elliott? All right, thank you. We're going to have staff questions now, on your, on your case.
Thanks, Liz, for coming down. Could you talk a little bit about what you're seeing out in the buses, and have there been notices, or have customers complained, or were they concerned about some of the systems that help restrain individuals in wheelchairs?
This was the first one that was brought to my attention on this. We did go through it and check the bus to make sure that the safety systems were working properly, and they were. And typically, how we do that is we do an annual, at least an annual check on all our safety systems, but then if they're involved in an accident, or the operators report that they're not working, we do check them on those interim basis as well. So in this case, it does appear that the safety systems were working, it does look as if, and we can verify it with the video, that they did go in, they did strap in, and that may not have gotten as tight as we would like. There was, the other part that we look at on the video was whether or not the operator took the turn too fast. We were able to check, and again, video verifies that the turn wasn't taken at an inappropriate speed or anything like that. And so I think it was just kind of, whatever hit at that time caused it, I don't, it does not appear to be reckless driving or anything in that. So what we are doing is going back through to retrain, to make sure that everybody is trained, understands how to install these and tighten them properly and do that. We do that on an individual basis, but we are also doing that at our safety training coming up November or December, the end of the year training, we'll also do that at that time, too. So those are some of the things that, here, there's not any one specific thing that has jumped out to say this is what was done wrong. It was an unfortunate accident, it's something that we don't like to see, we do our best to make sure it doesn't happen, but occasionally, things like this happen.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Elliott, would you describe for us, what's the procedure when someone in a wheelchair comes onto the bus? How do they get their chair locked into the straps? Who does that? And how is that checked?
So it depends, but typically, the process is the individual boards, the operator asks the individual if they would like to be strapped down. We cannot make anyone required to be strapped down, that is one of the ADA requirements, that it is up to the individual. If they indicate, yes, I do, some of them are very specific, some of them say, I want one strapped down, some say one in the back, one in the front. There's a number of different ways to do it. In this case, it's my understanding that there was the request to use one in the front and one in the back, I believe, I'll have to double-check that, but I believe that's what it was. You can see on the, the operator then typically is the one who then puts the safety straps on, tightens them, usually says, is everything okay, and then goes back up to their seats and resumes the trip. Sometimes, again, there might be some individuals with more mobility that assist, if it's a front or a back, but typically, it is the operator in those cases.
And it sounded, when you were going through, initially not through this last description, but when you, I think, were answering Councilwoman Raybold's question, that she said there might have been an opportunity, or there might have been the instance where the strap might not have been as tight as it could have been, but not necessarily a fault?
Correct. They, you can see on the video that they do hook up the straps as requested. There's several turns, almost a dozen turns between the first, when they take off, and then when the incident happens, you don't see any inappropriate shifting or changes on those turns, and then all of a sudden, on this last turn, something happened that caused the wheelchair to tip over.
When you're checking the mechanics of the restraint systems, so I'm aware that you, I mean, you just told us that you went through and made sure all the restraint systems were working well, do you just check them on an initial, yes, they're working, or do you actually, you know, a wheelchair, do you stress-test it?
Right.
So you take ten or twelve turns, or whatever, and then test it?
And actually, I wasn't sure of this, but I did meet with our mechanic supervisor this afternoon and had him walk me through kind of what they do. They do a visual, one, making sure the straps aren't fraying, or everything's still sewn tightly and connected. They then do just some internal, making sure it pulls out and goes back into the harness, essentially. They make sure the locking mechanism works, but the stress testing, stress testing, we don't necessarily do. We do ask the operators to watch if they're starting to see things loosen up, or things moving like there shouldn't be, but that is about the stress testing that we get, we don't necessarily go out and do that on a regular basis. It is something that we will definitely look into, to see if we need to be doing some additional testing, but at this point, not, we don't do that.
Thank you for answering.
Councilwoman Beck, yes?
Director Elliott, excuse me, on this specific bus, have you, has LTU had any incidences prior to or after with other individuals using the harness system? Any problems, other problems that you're aware of with this particular system on this particular bus?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I would have to go back, I'm not, I'm not sure how far back we look, so I would have to double-check on that, but I'm not aware of any other incidents with this safety mechanism.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Madam Chair, I don't know, since we have Liz Elliott up here, I wanted to ask a question concerning Mr. Skinner's claim, if I may do that?
Sure, yes.
So Liz, on Mr. Skinner, he said he, the inlet that, I guess, caused his tire to puncture, was there rebar sticking out, or was it just concrete, or what was sticking out? Was it in the normal traffic flow of vehicles?
It was not the normal traffic flow, it is off on the curb, obviously, operators of all vehicles are supposed to stay within the curb lines, not drive up on the curb or rub up against the curb. There was broken concrete that did cause the exposure of rebar, and so after, we did get this notification, which was the first notification that we had received of the damage, we get out there, as soon as we get these notifications, as Mr. Skinner indicated that, we usually are out in about forty-eight hours to get these fixed, because we don't want people walking or other damage like this to happen. And so we did get out there, fix it, we cut off the rebar that was sticking out and reshaped that inlet. So we did confirm there was rebar sticking out, at least after the incident. I don't know what it looked like before, because we had not had any indications, sorry, I'll mute that, we did not have any indications of damage to that inlet up until that day.
Was the rebar sticking out into the normal flow of traffic?
It does not look like it was sticking out, it looks like it was exposed.
Okay.
So because the concrete was broken, it was just exposed at that point. I don't believe that it was protruding farther out than it would be if the curb concrete was there.
So in order to strike it, you would actually have had to hit the curb?
You would have at least rubbed up right next to it at a minimum.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Elliott on any of the claims we've discussed so far? Okay, all right. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
All right.
My name is Robin Miller, thirty-four oh five South Twenty-Eighth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I am a caregiver for Vince Litwinowitz, Josephine, for the last three years. I would just like to show you the videos again. I have one other one that I want to show you initially. I don't know. You can show this. This is just one day when he was on the bus and he's strapped in front and back. And you can see how his chair has moved and slid over, which he could have fell again. Now, I'm going to show another, the other video.
Sony, Sony, would you turn this on, Bill?
As he fell off the bus. Now, now, as a caregiver, I, I, that, that would have been operator error for me. That is operator error, whoever buckled him up into the bus. He's the only person that got hurt on that bus. He is disabled. And his life has changed dramatically since this has happened. He is in pain all the time. He has lost core strength. He is in bed. And he needs some compensation for this. I don't know, you know, what it goes to. But to tell, to tell that a bus driver didn't tighten those tight enough is absolutely right because there is no reason that should have happened. None, none. It doesn't matter if it's one bus, all the buses, one person or any person. He's the one that got hurt. He's the one that's been suffering from it. And, and I, as a caregiver, I can vouch for it. I often wonder how you guys come up with these resolutions and decisions because not one of you has ever contacted him. No, nobody knows what his life is like or has been like since after this has happened. And, and yet you make a decision on his life after this meeting is over. It just, it just floors me. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for testifying. Any questions for Ms. Miller? Any comments? All right. Okay. Any, anyone else present to testify on claims before the city today? Anyone else present on item number five A? Okay. All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please move us on?
I'll be calling item five B, approving a request to the City Performance Audit Committee pursuant to Chapter four point six six of the Lincoln Municipal Code to determine whether an audit of the Finance Department and the operation of its Information Service, SIS Division, is appropriate and disservice.
Is there anyone present to testify on this item? Anyone present for item five B? Seeing none, we can move on.
I'll be calling item five C, assessing public health nuisance abatement costs associated with the clearing of public nuisances by the Health Department on the following benefited properties. Nine twenty South Sixteenth Street, twenty-five ten East Street, six forty-one West D Street, two four one South Twenty-Eighth Street, thirty-two twenty-one South Seventh Street, seventeen twenty-one and seventeen twenty-three South Twentieth Street, twenty-three thirty South Thirty-Fifth Street, sixteen nineteen Washington Street, twenty-four oh one North Chester Street, thirty-two oh five South Thirteenth Street, twenty-seven thirty-one Northwest Dahlia Drive, twenty-five thirty-nine South Fifty-Sixth Street, twenty-four twenty-six South Eighth Street, and thirty seventy Vine Street.
Welcome, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you. Scott Holmes, Major of the Environmental Health Division with the Lincoln Lancaster County Health Department. I'm here before you tonight to present assessment costs that the city each year is presented. The Health Department, as you know, is responsible to protect and promote the public's health in the community. And part of that role includes investigating nuisance complaints that we receive from the public. Each year we get about a thousand complaints. And this year we had to abate about twenty of those complaints. So a very small percentage. The vast majority of the public works with us to rectify the conditions on their property and reduce the risk to the public's health from things like large quantities of garbage or rodent harborage or mosquito harborage or things like this. These properties that you have before you tonight are ones that did not pay the abatement costs that were actually abated. And they come before the council for assessment against that property, and it is assessed as, in essence, a lien against that property. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the matter if you would have any.
Any questions for Mr. Holmes? Comments? Oh, okay. Great, thank you very much. We can move on.
I think we might have some people speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Yes, I beg your pardon. Please come. Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Is it possible you could give this to those guys so they could look at the date, please? My name is Renee Schultz, and I'm a property owner of thirty-two eleven South Seventh. And earlier of the year, I had been contacted by the Health Department to clean up my lot, which I thought we did, but anyway, that's, the item was out there, it was a part of one of my rentals. But anyway, that's, it's my property, so I guess I'm the one who's obligated for that thing, which is perfectly okay. The only thing I, I kind of would like to know, since that thing was assessed about thirty-two twenty-one, the people came up, they came on my, my property by my building, which is at thirty-two eleven, we just wanna make sure. You know, they started doing that thing, throwing stuff on my lot out there and everything else, and cleaning up the mess from thirty-two twenty-one. Well, I don't think that is quite right, but anyway, in the second place, when I, when I got, when I got the bill as the owner of that thing, they said, okay, well, we will get to you. As you could tell, I received a second letter less than a week ago, which is a, I had to report for the city council, so as you could tell. All I ask is a breakdown, how they come up with the cost. You just don't send a person a bill and say, here it is, unless this is in your system. That's what I got over there. Yes, I got a little bit of gripe over that thing. And I don't feel like I'm obligated to pay the damn thing until I get a breakdown on the bill. I asked the people over here, it's, it's kind of somewhat obvious. I realize the city operate in a speedy way, so it might take us seven more months to get the damn thing, but maybe we could get a little bit faster. I got one more letter over here if you don't like to give it to the lady. That was kind of unusual. Guy calls on the weed control on Monday, and then Tuesday they already showed up. So they do work fast in a certain way. That's about all I gotta say. And we're not gonna worry about that thing until I get a breakdown, how they come up with that cost. And I think that is very fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Are there questions before you leave, sir? Questions for Mr. Schultz or comments?
The date speaks for itself, sorry.
I'm sorry?
The date speaks for itself.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else present? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
I was gonna ask Scott to come back up unless there's someone else that wants to speak on it to talk about how the costs are calculated.
Mr. Holmes, Scott Holmes, okay. Mr. Schultz, I think he's going to talk about the breakdown of how bills are, if you would like to hear this. If you have time to stick around.
All right, Scott Holmes from the Health Department again. So abatement costs are accorded to each property based on how many inspections were completed, what the actual costs of the abatement were charged by the, typically the garbage hauler. And also then for administrative costs for work that staff does in sending the mailings, et cetera. And so those costs, as you can see in this particular case, for the number of visits, we had six visits on this property. Visits on this property began at the end of November of that year and went through March. So there were multiple visits, multiple attempts to get the property to be cleaned up. And then the costs for supervisory and staff time associated with that, followed by the administrative costs, and those are calculated on a per notification basis and things like that. And then the final cost there that you see is the, typically the vast majority of the cost is for the abatement itself, and that's for the contractor that the city has that comes out and does the cleanups. And that's typically, like I said, a waste hauler. So those are the costs.
Thank you. Are there questions for Scott? Yes, Councilman?
Question for you?
Come on, you can come back to the microphone, Mr. Schultz, if you would.
I have questions.
Okay, Councilwoman Raybold.
So Scott, thank you. Can you tell us, how does a person who's in violation know that these are the costs that they're incurring? Or is a summary or, or did Renee get a number of notifications? Like you said, they, the inspector was out six times. Is that right?
No, I have record of them being out multiple times. So the, the notification that goes out is a certified letter typically. And that certified letter identifies to them what are the issues. And then it specifically identifies that the costs could range anywhere from three hundred to a thousand dollars as an average. There was also a official notice specifically given in person in February first. And so not only were there letters sent in December, which specify exactly what is on the property and what the potential costs are, we don't know the costs until it's done. And then also they were notified in person of the same situation. And then once those costs are actually, once an abatement has been done, they're provided a specific notification about what the costs were and that they have the opportunity to pay that cost prior to it being assessed against the property. If they have questions about that, they can call in. We do provide delineation as to what those costs were. We're not trying to hide anything here. We've never have, so, yeah.
So I wondered, did the notices go to the tenant or do they go to the tenant and the owner as well?
Notices by law go to both tenant and owner.
Okay.
And the owner is responsible for their property, and that's why the costs come back to the property owner. That's under law, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Washington?
Mr. Holmes, just one more question.
Yes.
Because Mr. Schultz had wanted to make a point of having received then a weed abatement letter.
We, just so it's clear, we do not do weed abatement.
You don't do weed abatement. So that's just, I wanted to clarify because it seemed like the property was cleaned. And you, you sent that letter saying this is what's happened. And then he got from a different group, he received this nuisance letter from the Lancaster County Weed Control.
Correct, that's a different entity, yes.
A different agency, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Because I can see why it felt like it was a pile-on, but they were different agencies.
Yeah, and I don't have copies of that letter, nor do we provide, get copies from weed when they're doing such work, yeah, so.
Councilwoman Raybold.
Just one follow-up question. So it seems like you were called from a complaint from someone. Is that, or?
Typically, yes, yeah.
That's the only reason why you would respond? Because someone complained about the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm wondering if that's why, somebody complained about the weeds, so.
I would assume so. Both, both of the programs work on complaints.
What was the date of the weed abatement approximately?
Uh, May eighteen.
So that was post our abatement actions on that property.
Yeah.
Other questions for Scott Holmes? Seeing none, thank you very much. All right.
I guess it's upon me if you don't mind.
You could rebut for five minutes, sir, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, you can, you can address the council.
You still gotta have a way to come up to the numbers, right?
He just explained that.
You just don't put a number up on the front and you say, that's it. Don't you have a kind of little organization?
Yes, so.
Point of order, point of order, point of order.
Go ahead, yeah.
Council Chair, I would respectfully ask that comments be directed at the council and not at audience members.
You can address us, sir, or are you?
I'm done.
Okay, all right. Thank you for being here. Any other persons that would like to, yes, please come forward on this, on this issue? We're on the abatement issue, item number five C.
This is Tony Lee. His English ain't very good, so I'm just trying to help.
Okay, can we get your name as well, sir?
What's your address given? Ten fifty-five North Eighty-third, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Okay.
Six eight five oh five. He has the property at twenty-four oh one North Chester Street.
All right. And your name, sir? Could we get your name as well, please?
Mark Taggy.
Okay, thank you.
Just a friend, but I help him on that property some.
Okay.
So basically, he's having problems communicating and figuring out how things work. And so I'm just kind of trying to help him out here. He has, tried to get him to clean it up. They clean it up for a while and then they kind of, they're recyclers. So they bring washers, dryers, whatever, and then they're gone, and then they come and they go. Some come, some go, so it's kind of a continuous fight with him. He's been trying to evict them for a while. They will be out by the end of the month. But as far as he's gone and tried to get him to clean campers and things out of the place, he's called the police. He was gonna call a tow truck. And they have three campers parked on the property. But he can't get him to get them out of there. The police told him, well, if you have a tow truck tow them out of there, then it's gonna be a big fight, so don't do that. See if you can work something else out. Well, he's been trying to work on it for months to no avail, so what can he do? I don't know. So now he's gonna evict them, basically, but he's been trying to do that for a while. But time is coming by the end of this month that they'll either, police will have to come and evict them if they don't leave, I guess. But, so I guess he's kind of, about the charges that have occurred in the meantime, he's kind of wondering, what did they take out of there that was for seven hundred dollars?
Okay.
Because it's still, he's cleaned it all up in June, but these, I guess, charges were in May or something, May eleventh or something. So just kind of trying to get him some help so he can figure out what's going on and how he can address the situation.
You're in the right place. I'll try and figure it out, all right? Questions or comments? Maybe we could have, Mr. Holmes, could you come back up and perhaps help us work through this one as well?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Washington, yes.
I have a question that might be, you might be able to answer, sir. Is this a residential property or commercial property?
Residential.
Residential, but the tenants are operating a recycling business?
Out of the kind, out of the yard, yeah. They bring a lot of.
They just live in the campus, and then they bring all the stuff, like those appliances there. I don't know what they're gonna do with them.
They are recycled.
They are recycled.
Yeah, they're doing bad.
So it cleans up for a few days and then a week later, it's kind of back to the situation, but.
It does sound challenging, frustrating.
Terrible. But I don't know. He's tried cleaning. I was there. We tried cleaning up lots of stuff and put it out to the garbage. But a week or so later, you're back to the same thing. They haul more stuff back in, so.
I think we'll ask, we'll ask Scott Holmes some questions, and there may be other council members.
Just gonna try to.
Madam Chair, I leave it to you.
Are you good? Okay. Yeah, well, we'll have Mr. Holmes come back up, see if he can help us through this. Thank you.
Again, Scott Holmes from the Health Department. Have Danny answer any questions.
Could you, well, does anybody else first? Yes, Councilwoman Beckus, go ahead.
Mr. Holmes, could you just detail the abatement that took place on the property?
I'll wait till the photo comes up here, sorry. So these were the conditions that we received on the initial notification that were on at least part of the property. You can see that there's a tremendous amount of junk and debris and an old refrigerator. There's a camper on the property. There's garbage. This is the other side of the house where there was just some junk and such sitting in the porch and the front walk area. So that's a kind of complaint in this particular case that we received. And staff did work with both Mr. Lee and the tenants to try to get some of this stuff cleaned up. There was some progress made on some things, but as was mentioned, other things then show up. And so pre-abatement photos and post-abatement, I can show you what we did post-abatement. And so what you're seeing here is the property as it was left after the abatement. As is typical, there are things that we leave behind because they are property like a lawnmower or containers or something that will turn upside down and not remove. The ops, the opposite side of the house, you can see that what was a tremendous amount of garbage and brush and et cetera junk is now gone. And then we no longer typically get complaints on the property.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah.
Could you please place the photo back, the original photo that you took prior to the abatement? When staff was on site? It looks like from the information that we have in our reports, your total costs assigned to the property owner for abatement there were one thousand ninety-five dollars.
Correct.
I'm impressed by what you can do for a thousand ninety-five dollars.
Well, let me clarify, though. The pictures that you're seeing here were not the conditions that we abated. And as, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Okay.
As Mark mentioned, they did do some cleanup, so we didn't have to abate all of that.
Okay.
And I do have pre and post-abatement pictures specifically. I just wanted to give you a sense as to what the conditions looked initially. And we always take pre and post-abatement photos the same day as the abatement occurs, meaning this is what existed prior to the abatement actions themselves. And so you can see that some of the conditions are not there. The camper was still there and some things like that, but I do believe they had removed the refrigerator that was outside and those things. But yeah, and again, these are not costs that we incur in terms of our sta, this is not staff going out and cleaning this up. This is a contracted cost with the hauler. They base that on the number of staff they have, the vehicles that they bring, the time it takes, and then the cost of disposing this at the landfill, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Holmes, the staff?
Sure.
Yes, Councilwoman Raybold.
Scott, could you talk about what the process is after we vote on this item? Do the individuals receive another bill or are they, is this a lien?
It goes as a, an assessment against the property, basically as a lien against the property. So if the property is ever sold, that then would be paid. Or if they do want to pay that themselves, they can still pay that off and no longer have a lien against the property.
And if they want to pay it, do they come into the Health Department office to pay or do they?
Register of needs at this point, yeah.
Register of, register of needs, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you again. All right. Thank you both for being here. I hope that helps somewhat. Okay, anyone else here on item five C claims before the city? Anyone else on this item five C? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please move us on?
We can now vote on these items. Accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for September sixteenth through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
A second.
Seconded by Washington. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Beckus.
Madam Chair, I believe we have a motion to amend twenty-two R four ninety-one to add Matthew Reek's claim to the list of allowed claims, the amount of eighteen hundred dollars that we received via email from the City Law Department.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Raybold. Is there any further discussion?
Not on this one, but I'd like to offer another motion.
Okay, all right. Seeing, hearing no further discussion on Councilwoman Beckus's amendment, could you please call the roll? Vote. Sorry.
Show.
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Right. Councilwoman Raybold, do you recognize, or excuse me, Washington?
Thank you very much.
Whoops.
Councilwoman Ward. Um, I would like to offer a motion of continuance on Josephine Litwinski's. Thank you. I apologize. I'd like to offer a continuance and pull that from this item for, for further review and perhaps negotiation.
I would entertain a second.
There are two items on the agenda for.
Pardon?
There are two items on the agenda.
Oh.
For him. That's true, for her. Yes, she has two claims. Are they for both of her items?
No, for the bus, not the sidewalk, for the bus item.
Bus only, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion?
I'll start. I was, I think the information that I received this evening has given me some pause. The fact that the operator may not have tightened the straps enough and that those aren't stress-tested. And it wasn't that an immediate call with one turn, it was after ten or twelve turns. And so I guess I would like for there to be some more consideration for that. So I'd like to move it to continuance and ask the Law Department to talk again with Ms. Josephine.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to remove, to continue on that item only. Does that mean, as Counselor, that we need to pull that from the claims report versus continuing it?
I think if you look at the claims report, I think we have denied, allowed, and pending. I don't want to speak for Counselperson Washington's motion, but it sounded like maybe pending, but I don't, I don't know if that's the intent.
Pending would work well, and I accept the guidance with gratitude.
Thank you.
Thank you for your counsel. So given that, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Call vote.
I do have a question. Is it to remove the claim in place on the pending list?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's just for the one claim for the bus, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
With no date certain?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. Show?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried five one.
So now we are back to the main motion. I believe, all right. It was moved, oh, I guess I'll leave it back to you, Madam Clerk.
Yep. Show?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. We're calling item five B. Approving a request to the City Performance Audit Committee pursuant to Chapter four point six six of the Lincoln Municipal Code to determine whether an audit of the Finance Department and the operation of its Information Services Division is appropriate and is serious. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Show. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis, oh, excuse me. Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five C is assessing public health nuisance abatement costs associated with the clearing of public nuisances by the Health Department on the following benefited properties. Nine twenty South Sixteenth Street, twenty-five ten E Street, six forty-one West D Street, two four one South Twenty-Eighth Street, thirty-two twenty-one South Seventh Street, seventeen twenty-one and seventeen twenty-three South Twentieth Street, twenty-three thirty South Thirty-Fifth Street, sixteen nineteen Washington Street, twenty-four oh one North Chester Street, thirty-two oh five South Thirteenth Street, twenty-seven thirty-one Northwest Delia Drive, twenty-five thirty-nine South Fifty-Sixth Street, twenty-four twenty-six South Eighth Street, and thirty seventy Vine Street. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. That concludes section five of our agenda. We shall now move on to section six. Public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. Item six A is text amendment two two zero zero seven, requesting the City of Lincoln Planning Department's review amending Lincoln Municipal Code section two seven point zero six point zero two zero concerning commercial use access from a residential district where there is an approved special permit amending section twenty-seven fifty-two zero three zero and twenty-seven fifty-three zero three zero to clarify text for flood regulations for manufactured homes. Amending twenty-seven point six zero point zero two zero under planned unit development district maximum multifamily structure height of fifty-five feet for the, for the other zoning districts besides R one to R four, to include R five to R eight, and commercial districts amending twenty-seven point sixty point zero four zero planning unit development regulations and twenty-seven point six to three point zero two zero special permit regulations and twenty-seven point sixty-four point zero one zero use permit regulations and twenty-seven point six five point zero three zero community unit plan regulations. To clarify that items placed on pending at the City Council do not expire. Amending twenty-seven point oh six point one eight zero and twenty-seven point six two point one fifty to add permanent concrete paving plants in the I one through I three industrial districts and add conditions similar to those already required for temporary plans. Amending twenty-seven point six nine point zero two zero to add to the definition for on-premises signs to include signs within three hundred lineal feet of the premises to match the existing text for off-premise sign. Amending twenty-seven point seventy zero seven zero for outlots to allow minor structures and outlots which are zoned commercial or in a PUD. Amending twenty-seven point seven two zero six zero to include uncovered patios as part of a list of exceptions to the required yards and repealing sections. Twenty-seven point oh six zero two zero, twenty-seven point oh six one eighty, twenty-seven fifty-two zero three zero, twenty-seven fifty-three zero three zero, twenty-seven sixty zero two zero, twenty-seven sixty zero four zero, twenty-seven sixty-two one fifty, twenty-seven sixty-three zero two zero, twenty sixty, twenty-seven sixty-four zero one zero, twenty-seven sixty-five zero three zero, twenty-seven sixty-nine zero two zero, twenty-seven seventy point zero seven zero, and twenty-seven point seven two zero six zero as here to existing.
Steve Henrickson with the Planning Department. I'd first like to congratulate the City Clerk on successfully reading all of that with barely taking a breath, and also apologize for the length of it. It is due to the fact that this is a minor series of amendments to clean up some texts, some things that have come up typically during a building permit process. And we keep track of those, of things that we really need to tweak the text to have a better process. And rather than bringing them to you one at a time, we grouped them all together, and thus we end up with a very long explanation. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. This was unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission, and we've had no negative comments from the public about the changes.
Thank you very much for being here, Councilwoman Washington.
I have a couple of questions for you, and yes, that was impressive. And it was, it was, it's dense. What you presented to us is very dense, and I know that they're small, but let me ask you first about twenty-seven point oh six point zero two zero, use groups classification of use types. It's, it says that this amendment clarifies that a vehicle may take access to the business through the parking lot if that lot is approved by a special permit. Is there any change of like actual activity? Just has something changed for people?
No, the particular circumstance was the Village Inn at twenty-eighth and O Street approximately. To the south of it is a parking lot that is in a residential zoning district that is there by a special permit for the parking lot. They long ago tore down a house, put up a parking lot. So when they were coming in to look at, redevelop the property, they were looking to have the access come in through that parking lot where there's already a driveway. And Building Safety noted that something in our zoning ordinance already says, well, hold it. The access is supposed to come in through either a street or through a commercial zoning district. In this case, the parking lot is zoned residential and by special permit, but it's zoned residential. So Building Safety did not allow the access to come in through the parking lot, and the access has been through that parking lot for decades. So it was just kind of how the text was phrased, that we agreed that if there's a special permit that allows access to a commercial parking lot, then that's another exception to the rule and that generally access to a commercial property should come through a commercial district versus coming in through the neighborhood, so to speak.
All right, thank you. That helps on that one. And then I have a process question about all of the items that you have provided to us that clarifies the rule that if an item is placed on pending at the Planning Commission, it expires in one year. But if it comes to City Council and we place it on pending, it does not expire in that year. It can be, can carry it over.
Correct.
For any length of reasonable, no, I know you didn't say reasonable, and I won't add that word, for any amount of time. So my question is on the process, does an applicant, given fair enough warning, that once, because sometimes they themselves ask for it to be on pending. Are they given fair enough warning that that item does not rest on pending for longer than a year at the Planning Commission?
Yes, we send them a notice one month in advance to say that your item is going to expire unless you ask for this item to move forward to the City Council. And so typically in that circumstance, some of them have just let it expire. But others have said, okay, I'll work to try to get that to move forward. And some of them, it's been a while, but sometimes they come forward to you, have their hearing and say, we're still working on a few things. Can you put this now on your pending list for a number of months while we finish things off? So effectively, they could get fourteen, fifteen months, but that does mean that they have to move forward to your agenda. And at that point, you can decide if they've had enough time or not.
Well, I appreciate that, because I appreciate the reminder a month in advance because people do forget. I think I'm asking, are they told when they say I want it to be pending that they only will have, you know, ten months, eleven months?
Yeah, we, we explain the process, that one way you can save this is by going on to the City Council agenda because it doesn't expire. It doesn't say that in the text, and so that was always led to questions, and we would have to discuss with the City Attorney's Office what that meant. So we thought this was the time to state in there very clearly that if it's an item on pending at City Council, it doesn't necessarily expire.
Yeah, that's good because it costs money to begin the process again.
Yes.
And I would like them to understand the ramifications of any decision that they might. might make to go to pending. So thank you for that. You know what, I, I have, I have color-coded notes here. I'm looking at the manufacturing, there's two manufacturing changes of text, and they don't say exactly the same thing, but I think they're implying that one is for permanent and one is for temporary. Could you clarify in case I got that wrong?
Yes, without getting out in the, in the text, but basically what we had is our text specifically referenced temporary concrete plants and temporary batch plants, but nowhere did it say anything about permanent plants. And so it was never clear in our ordinance which one it was referring to.
Okay.
So this was just simply an attempt to try to say, oh yes, there's also something like a permanent plant as well. And I always get my terms concrete and cement confused, so I hope my colleagues with LT will forgive me if I use the wrong term.
All right, thank you very much. I have no more questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Henrickson from the council?
No.
Saying none, thank you very much, Steve. Okay. Is there anyone else here to testify on this item? Looks pretty empty. All right. Saying none, Madam Clerk, can you move us on?
Okay, that concludes Section 6. We shall now move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 7A is comprehensive plan conformance 22017, declaring approximately 1.74 acres of city-owned property generally located at North 78th Street and Colfax Ave as surplus, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7B is annexation 22011, application of 9305 LLC to annex approximately 16, 62 acres, more or less on property generally located at 9305 Adams Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Raybold. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7C is approving the annexation and change of zone agreement between the city and 9305 LLC for the annexation and development of property generally located at 9305 Adams Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7D is change of zone 22027, application of 9305 LLC to change from AG Agriculture District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at 9305 Adams Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7E is annexation 22006, application of Clark and Anderson to annex approximately 8.4 acres, more or less on property generally located at 9440 Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7F is approving the conditional zoning and annexation agreement between the city and 9440 Development for the annexation and development of property generally located at 9440 Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Raybold. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7G is change of zone 22011, application of Clark and Anderson to change from AGR Agriculture Residential District to R1 Residential District on property generally located at 9440 Pioneer's Boulevard, introduced by Bowers.
Henceforth moved.
Whoa.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
My breath away.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Aye.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
You can play that.
Item 7H is change of zone 22013, application of Riga Engineering Group to change from AG Agriculture District to R3 Residential District on property generally located at 8451 Eagle Crest Road, introduced by Bowers.
I pushed that forward.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Further discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Affirmative.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Okey-doke.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7I is amending the pay schedule for a certain employee group by adjusting the schedules of annual, monthly, bi-weekly, and hourly pay range equivalents for employees of the city of Lincoln whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by B, introduced by Bowers.
Let's roll.
Second.
Seconded by Beckus. Any discussion? Saying none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 7J, approving the sublease agreement between the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County Child Advocacy Center to sublease the second floor of the new building to be occupied by the Lincoln Police Department Special Victims Unit for a 25-year term with the option to renew for five additional 10-year terms for the property located at 5025 Garland Street, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Raybold. Councilman Beckus, you're recognized.
Yes, I just wanted to give my thanks to the Child Advocacy Center and LPD Special Victims Unit for their collaboration with this new lease of the second floor. I think obviously this sort of coordination and collaboration will best benefit those in our community who may need these services the most. And so just wanted to especially thank and commend those two organizations.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Comments? Thank you, Councilman Beckus. Saying none, please call the vote.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
I say yes, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Washington, motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 7. Section 8 is our resolutions first reading, items 8A through 8F. Section 9 is our ordinances first reading and related resolutions, items 9A through 9E. Our pending list consists of items 10A and 10B.
Well, tonight is an opportunity to address the council on any matters not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda. During our open microphone session, individuals are allowed a total of five minutes if, to speak, regardless of the number of topics. And this is, concludes our second open microphone session for the month of October. However, I don't see anyone present inside or, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought maybe come forward.
I have something else.
Okay.
Yeah. In the same spot, right? Uh huh. Does that work? Oh, my neck hurts. I need a new bed maybe tomorrow. But the thing is, I also wanted to say something about, it'd be nice to have a format so that based on cognitive, you know, or that, I need to respond like, if we started from the beginning, for example, someone like me, if, I don't know how you would have to demonstrate this or prove it, but maybe to think about it. Because if I would have, it would have been nice if I would have been able to talk back and forth, you know? It would have been nice to be able to address things right away that I really felt it was necessary, you know? And so it'd be nice, so I can, you know, so I can play my dobro like Cicero instead of having to wait next time and forget, and that's all. Now, what I really want to bring up is the, that cavity in front of Granger 105, I guess I'll come two times a month, but, so this is dangerous. There's football games, there's drunk people, and that crater is quite big, you know what I'm saying? And so it'd be nice if, if that would be fixed and, and then I, you know, just, let's brace ourselves for the Attorney General-elect that got away with discriminating against me, I say for the record. And so, man, I gotta get something here. I mean, when that happens, and then this happens, you know, something's gotta give. So anyway, that's all I had to say for tonight, and it would be nice to have that pothole fixed, because it's a pothole in the sidewalk. And that's all there is, and there's five wheelchairs coming, it's right by the ramp, five wheelchairs, boom, we can also hit the Husky traffic. And so anyway, thanks for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Josephine. All right. Seeing no one else present?
I move, will you adjourn?
Second. It's been moved and seconded, will you adjourn? Please. We are adjourned. Oh, do we? Please call the vote.
Raybold.
Raybold, thank you.
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
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 Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, Madam Chair.